Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Dover School Committees, Dover and Sherburne School Committees independently and the Dover Sherburne School Committee for tonight, March 25th at 7:30. This is an open meeting, but it's being conducted remotely via Zoom and it's consistent with Governor Baker's order of March 12th, 2020. Due to COVID, we are conducting these meetings not in person, but remotely. The information on how to join this school committee meeting was posted on our school website, the district website, and also the meeting agenda was posted there as well. Please note that since this is a remote meeting, it is recorded, so anything that you are doing or anything that you say will be captured and preserved for posterity. So you'll have it in perpetuity. So with that being said, and we've called this to order at 7:32, I'm going to turn this over to Kate Potter to start with the agenda.
Thanks, Angie. Um, I would like to start with a little bit of background that the interim search team has been working on since we last spoke. We have consulted all along with NASDAQ, MASCE, and other members of the current members and past members of the school committees who served on the last time we did an interim search. And that has been very helpful to get information from them, how they did it, what they thought worked, what didn't work as well. We have created the draft of the interim candidate profile and the two timelines, which we'll discuss in a few minutes. And among our subcommittee, we have appointed a chair and a secretary. I am the lucky chair and Sarah is our trustee secretary. But we are really all in this as a group and, and welcome everybody's feedback. Does anyone want to add anything to the background before I go on? Anybody on the interim search team?
No, that's a pretty good summary. I think that, you know, it was a good time to spend to collect some due diligence and things that have happened, especially in the last time that the district had to do an interim search. And having some of us have an opportunity to speak to those who are involved in that was pretty helpful. So, thank you.
Yeah, great. So in a few minutes, we'll, we'll go through the draft of the posting and the timeline, which I hope you all got a chance to look at today when Cheryl sent it out. And then after we look at those and hopefully vote to approve them, the interim search team will post the job profile. We will move ahead in collecting resumes and we will, as, as we've learned has been done in past practice, we will likely invite two building leaders and/or administrators to join our team. And then the six of us will go through resumes before selecting finalists. And we're on a pretty aggressive timeline. Whichever one we end up choosing, they're both aggressive. And so then if anybody else has something to add, jump in please. And otherwise, I think we can move ahead to looking at the superintendent posting. And if anybody had any thoughts and questions, I appreciate. I know some folks forwarded their thoughts to different subcommittee team members and that was very helpful. Thank you. We try to incorporate things into the description while realizing that it is a different position than the permanent role. So having said that, does anybody on the interim search team want to add anything before?
I think it might be great if at this point Amanda could share the screen and then we can certainly, I think it might be helpful to just sort of talk through, you know, the parts of the posting and kind of how we got to there. And certainly then obviously invite comment, questions, suggestions for, you know, if folks feel that we need to make our revision.
Can I just a quick question? This is Nancy. Should we comment on the timeline? When we like, if we go, are we going to go through the description and then the timeline?
Yeah, we should have two separate conversations. Well, yeah, because the timeline is not part of the posting per se.
Yeah. So Nancy, we'll have a chance to go through the timeline after this. Okay. So, and please the rest of the interim search team, jump in. We tried to take the four bulleted points from our permanent superintendent's search profile and put them into our first paragraph there. And then we went on and tried to add the things that we thought were most important for our district now. What, and what we need now and moving forward in also being realistic in what an interim might be able to offer us. Did you want to go through each line, Maggie?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think people have had a chance to read that. I, I think that, you know, we sort of did have some, you know, discussion about the degree to which, you know, we've got a really comprehensive profile for the permanent job. And yet, you know, what we're hearing from NASDAQ, from MASCE, is you really want to keep the posting to one page. And so it seemed like a lot to like, at first we were like, well, we could do that whole thing and this whole thing. So we then, we ended with, you know, wanting to summarize kind of one of our big buckets for candidate. You know, in terms of wanting to make sure that this candidate is in alignment with the current district initiatives and sort of what we're looking for for a district. And, you know, when we went down and huge props to Sarah, who, who really was the author of all the bullet points.
Yeah.
Or the committee for the interim role. We wanted to be really specific, for example, with what are our initiatives, you know, naming anti-racism, naming challenge success, so that we make sure that we get somebody who at least has familiarity and buy-in for those things, so that it's not a matter of somebody who's not going to be familiar with the kinds of work that the district is doing right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is Dennis. Just one question, the term continuity in the second bullet, what do we mean by that? In some ways interim by definition suggests there is not continuity. So I'm just trying to understand that bullet.
I can address that if you'd like, Dennis. I think the idea, I think that, that we had in putting these bullets together is that in looking for an interim, we're really looking for someone who can sort of steer the ship along our course, right? As opposed to a permanent superintendent who might have a new vision that they would introduce to the district and, and sort of change course. And so in terms of stability and continuity, we're, we're really trying to convey that we're, we're looking for someone who can come and take the helm, but, but, and keep the district moving forward, but not necessarily rock the boat, if you will. I don't know if others want to jump in with your views on that.
No, I think that that's what I'm thinking about when I see the continuity. I do know that there are times when districts bring in an interim to do just that, to shake it up, to clean the house, to, you know, root out problems that are going on. And that is not the case for us. And I think putting that in the bullets makes that public and, you know, hopefully sets the expectation for what kind of leader we're looking for, but also gives the potential candidates an idea of what they're walking into, that it's not a situation where there's chaos and they need to, you know, bring order.
Maybe too, because you know, Dennis, I had a question mark when we were going through the draft justice subcommittee as well on that bullet point. In my mind, it's, and we can add this, continuity of, of our core values, of our current initiatives. I know we do reference the current initiatives at the end here. But if we wanted to add something to be a little more clear, continuity of what?
District's goals, continuity of working towards the district's goals. Colleen, just jumping in.
Yeah. And I, listen, I don't, I don't, we don't need to wordsmith every word. I just, that, that word specifically stuck out just because of the nature of the role. And I, I neglected to say, I think this is fantastic. I appreciate the, the work that you guys put into this. It's clear that there was a ton of thought. And I, I think something that, having been on the original search committee, I think something that came up a lot was kind of data-driven decision-making and sort of not just sort of, lack of a better term, firing from the hip. Because whatever, while this person, it sounds as though from earlier conversations, we wouldn't be looking for them to necessarily make fundamental changes that have multi-year, multi-generational impacts. There likely will be things that come up that will have a multi-year impact. And if those decisions can be grounded in sort of the fabric of how things are progressing, whoever it is that ultimately gets the more full-time position likely would have a better chance of digesting and pushing that forward successfully. So that's kind of how I interpret it, but I wanted to make sure that, I was thinking about that. So I appreciate it again. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to add? Oh, yeah, Nancy.
I think Anne, Anne, you're, your hand up first.
Oh, sorry. I can't see everybody.
Thanks, Nancy.
Sorry, Anne.
I was just gonna say, I, first of all, thank you so much. I think this is really good. I think you guys did a really nice job, especially in the first paragraph, distilling the thoughts from the, our first four bullet points. And I think that you've hit upon a lot of what we really need. I think continuity, I think it's good to keep things a little bit open. We don't have to be exactly specific about everything because a little bit of what we can tell by if somebody, if a candidate comes to us and says, well, by continuity, I assume that you mean, and it's completely different from anything that we ever thought, that actually gives us a lot of data as well. If we give them so much in this, that they know exactly what we're looking for, then they may end up providing answers that are the ones that we think that they think we want to hear as opposed to what they necessarily really believe or what their experience really is about. So, well, I understand, I understand and I agree with you, Dennis, that, that certainly continuity is a term that's open for interpretation, that perhaps it's not a bad thing to see how they interpret that when we have those discussions.
Totally agree. I, I was just trying to get a little more thought here.
That, no, that makes, totally makes sense, Dennis. And I'm going to ask some more questions later about same sort of thing. So it's good to have those discussions.
Apologies, everybody. I'm trying to make sure I see everyone. Nancy, you were, you had something?
Yep, sure. I agree with Dennis and Anne and, you know, wonderful job with this concise, you know, adding to what we currently have, looking for an interim. The only thing that I don't know whether to add or kind of it's implied, but, you know, kind of reading through some of the materials that we had all received, making sure there's a strong acumen for superintendent for finance and facilities. And I know we have Dawn, who is wonderful, but, you know, that's not in here. And I just think that was something that was pointed out to us that we should be looking for someone with that, with those two skillsets. And so I don't know, I don't see like the, you know, so anyway, that's, that was, that's my comment, that we should maybe think about adding or making sure that checks the box in whatever candidate we choose.
I, I guess I would say I totally agree that it's important that any candidate have those skills. And I'm wondering whether that's something that we can get at through interview questions. I mean, I think there's like an underlying assumption that the person, if they've had these jobs that we're asking them to have, will have had that experience. But I think that some proven questions in interviews around that, you know, how, what, how have you dealt with the, you know, give an example of when you've dealt with a challenge, you know, sort of scenario questions would definitely dig around at that.
And I think it's also in their experience if they had a Dawn there versus if they did not, you know. And anyway, I just think that was pointed out and I just don't want to overlook that, that, that is, that is one of the things we're looking for, for in a, in a superintendent, that they have that acumen.
Yeah, I think you're right, Nancy. And I think that a lot of the, you know, when we were thinking about how to keep this to one page, a lot of the great things that are in our, our permanent superintendent profile, all of those bullet points. First, we were thinking, how do we, can we cram some of those in here? And then we, you know, we thought, we tried to pick the most important things that we thought would fit for the interim role. Excuse me, knowing that we could flesh out some of those other things in the interviews and, and during the screening process. So we're definitely not letting go of the other things that we want. We just tried to condense down onto this one page.
No, and I think that's great because this is an outward, outwardly facing document. It'd be interesting to see what the rubric is that you use to interview, because that would be something like, you know, what is there, you know, what is their acumen in the, in finance and facilities? So I know this is the outward facing, like just, I just wherever, wherever it lands in your rubric or I, I just think it's an important point that I'd like to make sure that we're, we're, we're doing our due diligence and asking all the right questions around it. That's all.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Anne?
Sorry, I've already gone. So Liz or Colleen, and then you can come back to me.
I'm sorry. I'm so, I'm sorry, Colleen. I'm not tech savvy and I can only see a few people.
Is it, okay, thanks. Yeah, I was just in thinking about what will be, what we would hope to be moving forward on in the next coming year. I know that we'll have the results of the equity audit. And I kind of wanted to see something, maybe it's just implied in the last bullet point, but being ready to act, take action on, on our, you know, our initiatives. You know, depending on what our equity audit comes back with in a way that we can start taking action, but also position us for making progress in the years to come. So I think someone who demonstrates relevant experience with and support for the ongoing work of district initiatives, I also feel that this should be someone who can, you know, react in the, in the moment to some of the civil unrest, you know, the hate crimes that are happening, that are, you know, affecting our communities, whether directly or just instilling fear and shame in our community. And I think that we need to be looking for a leader who will in the next year, at, at least, and also, you know, mentoring us through some of this unrest. And so someone who can lead with courage and compassion is important to me at this point.
Can you still hear me? Okay. Um, I, I agree, Colleen, and I, I think we were hoping to capture that in that last bullet point.
Yeah.
And maybe we can flesh that out a little more. I'm also.
It can be separated, you know, and instead of lumping DSAID with challenge success and sustainability task force, maybe it can be its own bullet point at the minimum. I don't know how there feels, how others feel about it. It just feels pressing to me in this moment. And likely this is not going to feel much better in a year. It's, it's something I think we will need guidance through this next year.
Does anybody else want to comment on that? Is that something we could add into that first paragraph?
I guess, I guess for me, I, I like keeping, I, I think those things are really important and they are specifically important interview questions. Like I think that's like a whole interview question. Like this is the news, like every, you know, this is what's going on in the world. Like how are you prepared to respond and be proactive in all those things that Colleen mentioned? But I do think that's something that we'll find out pretty quick in an interview. But that's just, I'm just like one person, so I'm not married to any things. I'm just really like worried about brevity.
On that interview process, you know, even looking back at the, the interim, the superintendent's search, do, I know there, it's confidential that we can't see the, the results of the interview questions. But do you use a standardized rubric that you guys kind of collaborate on and then compare notes at the end?
That, that is standard practice, although I wasn't part of the first search, but I would assume that we would do that this time.
Yeah, that was, that was how it was done. We had a sheet to fill out with the same, with the questions and the important parts of that. So, yeah. But Nancy, I think those are really good points that you raised about keeping the rubric. And Colleen, I agree with you that that's a hugely important issue. But I also agree with Maggie that we can't put everything that it's mentioned here and then we can flesh it out more. This is, this is just to give people a sense of, yes, this is kind of, I think I would fit in here. I think this is a place that my skillsets would work. And then you find out more in the first round of interviews. And then if they continue, you learn more about them in the second round. So I think that the, I have, I have faith that the screening committee will ask them those questions and then we will then have a chance to also ask those things of the finalists. Because I agree that it's of the utmost importance.
Yeah, thanks, Anne.
Jump in, Liz. Just go.
Please, I, yeah.
I don't want to mess up protocol. Um, I just wanted to say, I think you guys did a tremendous job of synthesizing what we're looking for into six bullet points. That's like pretty impressive. And it really does get at the heart of, I think, what we need. If after reviewing this whole thing, we were to add one bullet point, getting at what Colleen is talking about, I do think that that would speak volumes of about who we are as a community and where we're trying to go as a community if we were to add one more bullet point. If that's the only thing we need to add, it would speak volumes about what we're trying to bring here and attract here and who we are trying to portray ourselves as.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for those thoughts. And so.
Sorry, Kate.
Please, I'm sorry. My family's, they're in the background and I'm sorry.
But that's okay. I have two quick things. On the second paragraph, it says interim superintendent role requires a candidate who will. I worry a little bit about requires, because while that is certainly what we're seeking, I, I also don't want to limit us if they, suppose there are 20 sort of things embedded here and they fit 19 of them. And they're like, oh, but I can't because that's required. I wonder if that's something that you guys can at least make sure that you're comfortable with that or review that. And then I have a quick question. I would love to have a little bit more clarity on what you were, what you were thinking about engage, it's the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet point. Facilitate post-COVID community learning and engage lessons learned to advance student learning. The engaged lessons learned, I would just love to hear a little bit more so I understand that a little bit better. Thank you.
I can say at least what I, what I had in mind. You know, there are a lot of people who've discussed the silver linings that have come out of this pandemic in terms of, you know, some innovations in, in the way that we teach and learn that may well behoove us to keep around post-pandemic. But I think the idea here is that we are looking for a leader who can tap into, you know, where are there gaps that need to be filled? What things went well in terms of, you know, the pandemic response that we'd like to keep? You know, what old modes might we have always sort of assumed we needed, but, but we figured out we don't. And, you know, essentially, you know, how also do we bring this community together in a way that heals from the collective trauma that, that all have been through? So that was my intent in that bullet point. But I'm certainly open to, you know, spelling that out more, or if others read it differently, be happy to discuss.
I think I was just looking if it was internal lessons learned versus a more external. So that makes sense.
I mean, it could be everything from, you know, safety protocols and how to, you know, implement those to, you know, pedagogical kind of lessons learned. I think it, it's intended to be broad.
No, that, that makes sense. I think the other thing I was sort of thinking as I was reading that is I feel like a lot of that work is done at the building level. So I think the facilitate that you put at the beginning of that is the key, is really key. And so I was just sort of processing it. So you helped me process that. Thank you.
And we could say leverage lessons learned or?
I like, I like leverage personally. Because I feel like that's more of a superintendent.
Do we want to do a little straw poll on leverage versus engage?
I, I apologize. I don't mean to wordsmith anything.
Oh, no, Anne.
I just want to, I want to make sure people get heard. And also I'm trying to think about how an organized way to, you know, make the changes people want to make without it, you know, like just so that we can make it happen.
I like that. I like leverage.
Okay. I, I liked leverage also.
Okay. Anyone not like leverage?
I like it.
Is that official enough?
I think that's good. I think we can modify. So like when you make the motion, it will say with amendments as, you know, made. So that would, we would modify engage to say leverage.
Okay. Thank you, Maggie.
Anne had also raised the question about, you know, requiring a candidate. I don't know if, Anne, if you had another substitute suggestion that you think could fit better there, but.
I'd see, I was, I was going to say seek is, is in the first sentence, but seeks a candidate. Oh, wait, in addition, the committee recognize the unique. Sorry, it doesn't work there.
Yeah, that, yeah, it's hard. I'm having trouble finding, thinking of a word.
Yeah, we could reword it so that we're actively looking instead of the role, doing the verb. We could be doing, doing.
Our English teacher.
Yes. Amanda can rework it.
We could also use, you know, desires, favors, you know, instead of requires, make it more preferential.
Yeah, I like desires.
I think desires is a good one.
Yep.
We could also just simplify it and say, in addition to the quality set forth above, the candidate will.
We could, but that might be, that might still have, Anne, tell me if I'm.
It's still strong. I mean, it's definitely still stronger than seeks. It doesn't say requires, but it says like, you will do this, right? Which is what we want them to do. We're not saying they have to have done it. We're saying they will do it, but just depends how strong we want to be, I guess.
I like desires. I think I do too.
That works.
Anyone feel strongly that they don't like desires?
I like desires, but I'm just, it's a little strange because it's the unique nature of the interim candidate role desires, the candidate. Any desiring. So I think we can just play with the wording a little bit.
So we can, you got, we can vote on it with changes, forthcoming changes as discussed.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you just read my mind because I was thinking, do I have to add each of these minutia things into the motion? No. Thank you. Okay. These are, this is great feedback. I really appreciate it. Do we feel like we're ready to move on from those bullet points? Yeah, okay. I mean, qualifications are fairly straight. I mean, qualifications are fairly straightforward. Any issues, any thoughts on that? And then the rest is just how to apply.
Just, and this is my lack of experience with that licensure process. Is that something that has to be maintained regularly? Guidance that I think I've heard from other folks is that the Massachusetts education system is maybe a little bit different than others. So we're, I think the point of this is to make sure people have like relevant and recent experience with Massachusetts educational system. Is that, is that the point of this?
Well, that's part of it, but we also want to make sure that they're licensed. That's a, is, that's a legal requirement. Am I correct in the, for the members who have been, yeah? Yes, Anne is nodding. Yeah.
Can you have that license and not have been in Massachusetts for 10 years, I mean? Or is that something that is maintained?
You have to keep it up. You have to renew it.
Okay.
I don't know if you can, you know, there was one point when I held, we were moving all over the place and I think I had four different public state teaching licenses and I had to decide which one to keep up, but I don't know. I don't know the answer. Do you have to still reside in Massachusetts to? No.
I appreciate that background. I guess let me invert the question. The reason I'm asking is I think relevant and recent experience in the Massachusetts educational system is important. If that's what this means, I'm cool. We can move on. If that's not what this means, or somebody thinks that there's a wide enough gap in that for interpretation. Is it important for us to state that?
Anne, you're muted.
Sorry, someone could have been a superintendent in another state or in Massachusetts and then gone elsewhere and then been a superintendent there and come back for the licensure. They, you know, and there are people who have licenses who have not yet done that here. If we want to make sure that they have served as a superintendent in Massachusetts in recent years, that's not required here, but we could quickly tell that by an applicant.
Yeah, Angie?
I, I'm just letting you all know that Maggie's internet died. So if you're looking for Maggie, she's not there.
Yeah, I just noticed that.
She's trying to get back to us, but her internet went down, so.
Looks like she's trying to come. Oh, I see you, Maggie. Okay, thank you for that, Anne and Angie. Yeah, and Dennis, that's something that we would definitely be flushing out in interviews and see on their resumes. And I, I think the whole team definitely agrees with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not advocating for that to be an absolute requirement. Just, that's good. I'm good. Thank you.
So should we go on to the timeline or should we vote the the superintendent, the interim posting? Should we vote that first?
I think there were a couple of things that I heard brought up in the discussion that I'm not sure we narrowed in on a final consensus.
What were you, what were you still wondering about?
I'm not sure if there was a decision on whether we should amplify some of the DSA type work and the, you know, the expertise and drive that an interim would have around that particular work. I don't know if, if it's the will of the group that, you know, that, that we amplify that or, or that it's sufficiently covered the way that it's drafted.
Yes, thank you. I guess my takeaway was that we had thought about flushing that out in the interview, but I don't want to pass that over if folks aren't comfortable with that. Anne?
Would moving it up in the bullet points help make, because if, I sent, I thought I heard that part of it was that we want to make sure that people realize that that is of the utmost importance to us. So would moving it up in the bullet points serve some of the same purpose? I'm asking, I'm not saying I necessarily think that we should do that. I'm just asking folks what they think.
Amanda?
I wonder about moving it up maybe after the bullet point with continuity. Because then we talk about the ongoing work, so that might help clarify that a little bit. And then it also comes close to the first bullet point, which I think the act of listening, empathy and openness is what we need for someone to be able to handle that kind of work and help us in that area. So maybe moving those closer together would help.
That might also clear up the continuity word dangling out there. Colleen, how does that feel to you? Do you feel like that?
Yeah, I, I expected to see it higher in the priority list, you know, initially. I know, I think that does make a statement to move it up higher. I, I just, I want it to, I, I don't want us to lose focus on this important work. And, you know, that can happen, I think, with an interim. That is the, the cost, the possible cost of having an interim is that the work and the momentum that is so important in our community right now around these issues. I know you, you believe strongly in this too. And you work every day for it. And I just want that to be seen. I want, I want it to be known. And I don't want us to back away from it because we're going, you know, the route, the route of this interim. So that is something I will be looking for in a candidate. So I think it should be amplified in whatever way makes sense to the committee.
Yeah, I'm fine with moving it up. I know I can speak for myself that I don't think we put these in any priority order, but by moving it up, it would show. Yeah. Right, bringing it to the forefront right away.
Right.
Yep.
No, and I, this is, it's a fabulous document that we're starting with. So I really appreciate the work you guys have put into it. It's really thoughtful.
Thank you, Anne. We appreciate your comments because sometimes you get so into it that you, it's hard to step back and see. So thank you. What, so how do people feel then about moving that up? Does that feel better? See some thumbs?
I was also going to say, one of the things we talked about was we wanted to spell out DSA because we really thought that having the word anti racism was important in that bullet. A lot of schools talk about inclusion and diversity and equity. But that anti racism is a word we wanted in, in the bullets.
Yes, yes, to make Colleen's point exactly. Yeah, thanks.
That really jumped out at me and I think that it, it will speak about our community that that is like front and center in, like, you know, written out on our document. So I appreciated that.
Great. Okay, so are we feeling, it seems like we're feeling better than by moving it up? Am I reading the Zoom room correctly? Okay, thank you. Any other comments about this document? Or do you, do we feel, have I missed, Sarah, is there anything else that you were feeling that we hadn't settled yet?
The only other thing that I'm not sure we came to a landing on, Dennis had mentioned the recurring theme of data-driven decision-making in the you know, in the conversations in the first go-round. And so I, I didn't know if that was something that people felt was missing here or if we needed a bullet on that theme.
I think we all agree that that's important. I think it just wasn't included in an effort to be a little more concise and that we were hoping to get to that information during an interview process, but I don't want to speak for the rest of the team.
I would concur. I mean, I feel like that's a good interview question, like how do you make decisions? Here's a hard dilemma, like what would you do? And you want to see, obviously, if the person watches this, this particular meeting, we want to see that, you know, they are using the information that's reflected and you, you know, and then organized and data-driven away, right? I think that's definitely part of the charge of the interview process.
Yeah.
Did we lose Kate?
I think she's frozen.
Does that feel okay to people? Can you hear me?
Sorry, you were frozen for a second.
That's so funny because you were not and I just kept talking. I, I don't know what you heard or not. I just, I just asked if that felt okay to people to make sure that we get to that in the interview questions. Okay, Judy, I appreciate you turning on your camera to give us the thumbs. Okay, should we move on? So now back to my other question. Should we, or should we do the timeline and then voting process?
I think, I think we should vote for this and we should go over timeline.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I will take a pass at this and we have to vote this by committee, correct? Okay.
So start it for the region and then you can pass it to the other chairs for the locals.
And, and the chairs don't need to repeat it. They just need to say as stated. The motion as stated. So they don't have to try to repeat unless they want to try, but you don't need to.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so I'll take a stab at it. I'd like to invite a motion for, from the region for the interim superintendent candidate profile with discussed amendments. Is that correct? Do I need to add anything else to that motion?
Not just with, with changes as discussed.
With changes as discussed. So Maggie, Sharon, so moved.
Julie Miller, second.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Maggie. Okay, then at the region. Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes.
Lynn, I have heard from her. She is safe, but not with us tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we've got everyone at the region. All right, thank you. Sherburne?
Okay, so do I have a motion to accept this as well from Sherburne?
Moved Nancy Cordell.
Do I have a second?
Amanda Brown, second.
Okay, and so is there any discussion? Hearing none, if everyone will take themselves off mute, I'm going to do a poll vote. Dennis?
Dennis Quant, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Nancy?
Nancy Cordell, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes.
Thank you. Dover?
I guess this falls to me in Leslie's absence. Do I have a motion to accept the candidate profile, the interim candidate profile as stated?
With, with changes?
With the change. Exactly. Yes. So moved. Second?
Second. Liz Grossman, second. Is that what I say?
Exactly. Discussion? All right, then if you would take yourselves off mute to vote. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. And yeah, Liz, I know that seems funny. We only do that in Zoom world because the person taking the minutes isn't always watching. It helps, it helps them know who made the motions. Okay, so now let's go on to the timeline. We decided. Yeah, Judy?
Can, can I just suggest that once we, you sort of do your thing and go through it?
Yeah.
We unscreen share because it's, it's hard because we can't see people with the screen sharing and it's, it, it makes, I think, for a better discussion.
So you can see people if you make it the whichever view, it's the gallery view and then you put your cursor at the edge of the screen share or the edge of the pictures and slide it over. If you're, but I don't know that you can do that on an iPad.
Yeah, I don't think I can do it on an iPad. Oh, well, okay, then I'll just shut up. That's fine.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I had to switch my view so that I could see everybody who was raising their hand.
Thanks for that. And that just helped me a lot. Thank you. There you all are. Hi.
That's recorded, right? That I actually had some sort of tech savvy comment because it's a first.
I've been doing this every day for a year and I have only just now discovered.
Magical. Thank you.
I just learned that yesterday from Sarah and Amanda and Maggie. So thank you. Okay, so the reason we made two different timelines. And again, the team jump in, please. They're, they're both aggressive timelines, which they kind of have to be. We don't want to lose candidates. But we want to also give people enough time to get their materials together to apply. We don't, we don't want to lose a candidate to another job. We also don't want to lose somebody who just doesn't have time to apply. There are also different holidays in here and our public school vacation that we were trying to work around. So I don't, does anyone on the, does anyone else want to jump in and go through why? Because I know like a, not to put you on the spot, but I know that Amanda spoke with different people about their, about their thoughts like from NESTC and MASC on their thoughts on the timeline. Do you mind jumping in and kind of talking about the pros and cons of what they told you?
Yeah, not at all. So the, the biggest question we had for Glenn and Art of MASC ASC and NESTC was the turnaround time between when we posted the position and applications were due. And our, that target date plan A seemed very aggressive to NESTC. And when we were talking about it, we felt that it, or we kind of acknowledged that Passover and Easter kind of fall between now and then. And, you know, I can speak for myself. I was thinking of, if we're talking about valuing challenge success, like I feel like we want people to know that we value their family time and downtime as well. So that turnaround time seems short. We can, both timelines that I heard from elsewhere were three weeks, four weeks. The person who said four weeks first said three weeks. If you want to be aggressive, the person who said three weeks first said two weeks if you want to be aggressive. And then we kind of filled in the dates from those target application due dates. Thinking about where the vacation fell, trying to be respectful of various holidays and not wanting to ask administrators to work over their vacation when they've worked so hard all year. The, I guess the, the worry about the longer timeline is that we could possibly lose people. But I suppose we could lose people with the aggressive timeline also. Feel free to jump in if there's something that I haven't mentioned.
Amanda, and I think, thank you. And I think also the, you know, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we'll be inviting a building leader or two and/or an administrator to join our screening committee. And as we, as a subcommittee, we're looking at our timeline and when we would need to be reviewing the applications. We realized that even though the four of us were willing to review some stuff over the break, we felt that wasn't fair to ask of the administrators or building leaders. So yeah, that's where we landed. Anne?
Sorry, just a quick question. For the April 15th slash May 4th date, it says school committees select finalists. So just a quick question, um, for the April fifteenth slash May fourth date, it says, school committees select finalists. Is that when you vote on the slate of finalists? Is that what that means? Okay, um, so I just wanted to make, make it clear that the school committees are voting on the recommendations as opposed to selecting, because then the interviews followed that. Right? Thanks for that clarification.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, what, I guess, since the, the subcommittee is, is doing the lion's share of the work, what do you guys think? I think it's, it's important to respect how the four of you feel about this. And so I'd be interested to know what you think.
Um, I can, I can say I feel more comfortable with Plan B. Just based on my conversations with Nesdick and MSAC.
It sounds to me, I, I tend to agree with Amanda, just because there, there is overlap between the two, you know, different versions that we heard with three weeks. And that's what this Plan B is, is based on, is a three-week application um, from posting to due date.
Can I also just say that, so like if you did Plan B and you realized that somebody's like, well, I have offers elsewhere, you can always, we could always tighten it. So for instance, the, we're giving ourselves a week um, to conduct finalist interviews. And then the following week, um, select the interim, we, you could in theory, if there are two finalists, say, do them two consecutive nights, like a Monday, Tuesday, and then vote on Thursday if you needed to. Not ideal, but there is some wiggle room, so it's not necessarily set in stone, just because we decided that this is what we'd like to do, or just because we vote on it now.
Yeah, and I think that this is not an action required item, I don't think, on our agenda. So it's not a vote per se, but I think it is something that we do want guidance from everybody in terms of what you would like to see and, you know, what you're worried about.
Oh, okay.
Evil vacation. Um, but it's not like we vote on this tonight and it's like a promise that, because, you know, also things matter, right? Like somebody might be traveling or, you know, whatever, like obviously these are all have a lot of moving parts. Um, you asked Judy what we think. I, I think in my dream world, I like A because I like having it wrapped up and I feel like everybody likes to have certainty sooner rather than later. And in the realistic world and the reality, um, I think B is a more sane option. I, like, the tricky thing for B is that, um, you know, in trying to, you know, people handed their applications and April vacation happens and we saved screening committee reviewing them for the Monday after, you know, being respectful of April vacation for folks who might join us, but we might find out that people are not, in fact, you know, administrators don't always take the school vacation. So we might in fact find that they, they are perfectly happy and could scorch that up a little bit and make a little more room here or there. So I, I do agree that the longer posting time gives us probably more folks have a chance to, to see if they might want to, um, join the party. Um, I do think it's important to note, if we are doing the visits on the week of the fifth through the 12th, having the committee members mark their calendar for Friday evening, which is normally not a school committee type of night, but, um, it is Eid, it's the Muslim holiday Eid on Wednesday and Thursday. And so, you know, we would not hold, it wouldn't be considered like respectful to hold a meeting that night. So we wouldn't want it to then go over the weekend because that is challenging when you've got candidates and you want to kind of.
I think the other thing we were hoping to do by sharing the timeline with you is, um, over on the right-hand column, sort of share the process and note which, um, which bits of the process happened in open session and which bits of the process happened in executive session, just so that the process is clear and transparent to everyone. And the asterisks are for us so that we know we need to post the meetings. It's a reminder for us.
Yeah. Is there anyone who wants to make a big case for A?
I don't want to make a big case, but I would really like, I'd like to have more of a hybrid if possible between the two. We, not hiring until mid-May is going to give me just such anxiety. Um, it just feels so late and I, it may not be. But it, it just feels like that's really late and that we will miss, we might miss out on some people.
Yeah.
I'm concerned with A because one of the reasons stated that we did not pick a superintendent was because Zoom is difficult to interview during Zoom. So we might have to, you know, do additional interviews, you know, if we don't feel comfortable. I know it's not the superintendent to, you know, the, the superintendent that's going to be here forever or for, you know, at least, at least two years, but, um, with the interim, I think we need the flexibility because many of you felt going through the process that interviewing during Zoom wasn't the best and maybe it, what, there was no wiggle room or opportunities to do additional Zooms. So I would think that we would want the additional flexibility in case we do have to kind of dig down or, you know, you know, again, just taking, just taking from what the last committee had stated, that's all.
Those are good points and I think, um, I, I didn't realize, so thank you to the folks who mentioned it, that, um, you know, we, we can change these as we go to an extent, right? Are we allowed to change? I'm assuming what we can't change is the application due date. That wouldn't be fair.
Once we post something that says when the posting is, we can't like, you know, if, if a candidate we all decide lo, we love applies on the first day, we can't interview them and then decide we're done and we'll go.
We're all, yeah. So, but, but the other things.
The other things are flexible.
Yeah, so, um, you know, if people are comfortable, maybe we, you know, was it something we should pose that, you know, you give us permission to kind of, after all the applications are in, to move dates around if we need to?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think I'm hearing consensus for B with an eye towards being efficient on the backend if it is at all possible. That seemed like thumbs up.
Yeah. That feels good to me, too.
All right. I think our, that means like our work here is done.
Yay. So we don't need to vote on that. All right. And is there any, oh, I did want to mention, of course, anybody with any thoughts or questions, please reach out to your um, super, your interim superintendent person or your chair. Um, we're very appreciative of all your thoughts and feedback. And then is there anything else we need to cover?
Judy has her hand up.
Oh.
Thank you. I, Kate, I, I just want to, um, I just want to channel Maggie for a moment. And, and thank the four of you for the really extraordinary work you've done thus far on this, um, committee. It makes our work so much easier. I really appreciate it myself. So thank you.
I reckon that.
Thank you. Okay, so do we need to, um, pull to adjourn or anything like that?
We have to adjourn, but we can adjourn by unanimous consent. After I watched all the other towns in America do it that way.
Okay.
I just have one question on the applications. Is, are we marketing this? Like, how, like, how do we get the word out on this? What, what is that?
Great question. Um, we have a contract with Nesdick, um, which is the search firm, as you know. Um, we will list it on their site and, um, accept applications. We will also post it on the Mass Association of School Committees' site. Um, and I believe we can also, Nesdick is also going to send it through school spring as well, right?
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, people, once it's posted, you know, in-house, you know, people sit, sending it and sharing it on their LinkedIn, I mean, education people, you know, probably, you know, in, you know, social media marketing is also an option as well, word of mouth.
Great. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
I just, I wanted to thank everyone for sharing feedback, um, as we were working on this because it was really helpful to hear from people.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so do I turn it back over to Angie?
You can, or you can just say, um, let's, may I have a hand vote if you would like to pull to adjourn for the evening? If not, we can stay here and have dinner together. I'm good.
All right, hands up if you are ready to pull to adjourn.
Looks like we have unanimous consent.
Yes.
All right.
Hey, thank you, everyone.